Start with our first meeting, six thirty, appeal. To hear the appeal of-
Madam Chair, you mind if I just make the announcement briefly?
Oh, yes, excuse me, we have a special announcement about tonight's board.
Yes, so, folks, normally our ZBA is a five-member board, but our fifth member couldn't make it tonight, so we have a four-member board here present. That means that all appeals tonight have to be a unanimous vote to pass, meaning four out of four board members need to vote to approve your appeal. If you have any concerns, you're welcome to request a continuance until next meeting, at which time the appeal will just be decided at the following meeting, okay? If you have any questions, we can discuss it when you come up, okay?
Great, okay. First hearing of the evening, to hear the appeal of Amadi, Inc., thirty-one Granite Street, Suite Six, Milford, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to expand a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling upon property located at fifty-eight Beverly Hill Drive in the Residence B-1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-three, Plot Three-One-Seven-Zero-Zero-Zero. Thank you, please step forward.
Either one.
Either one. You state your name for the record, please.
Sure, sure. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members. My name is Richard, R.I.C.H.R.D., last name Wackell, W.A.C.K.E.L.L. I live at fifty-eight Beverly Hill Drive in Shrewsbury. Basically, coming in front of you tonight to ask that, respectfully ask, that we be granted a variance for a construction of a new deck to put on our home. We presently have a pressure-treated ten-by-twenty-foot deck, which has limited the amount of space that we have on the deck when we have furniture out there. We're in a situation where I have to constantly be moving people around and telling them to move, so when I grill, the grill's not on top of them, and heating them up and smoking them out. So, we'd like to plan on putting an additional four feet to make it a fourteen-by-twenty-foot deck on our home to create better living space for us outside.
Okay, great.
I have some pictures, I don't know if, the time I should pass them out to show-
If you hand them out, we have to keep them, but we're happy to take them as-
Sure.
-further information.
And I also have letters from, to our butters inside of us.
Okay.
Great. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm not sure I have enough, I apologize.
That's fine.
One is showing the deck, the other is showing the-
For me.
Existing.
One is showing the area behind our house, which, yeah, the abutter is really not close.
Right.
But I do have letters, as I say, signed by the three abutters, if you need those.
Do you have the letters with you?
Yes.
If you would like to give them to us, we can take them on as additional information.
Okay. I didn't read.
That's okay. No problem, thank you very much.
Is this more copies?
Hmm?
Same one.
Uh-oh.
Ms. McAllister, anything to add?
No, this is a simple special permit. The only thing I'd call the board's attention to is that they have also submitted a waiver request for a certified plot plan. You can see that they've amended or kind of drawn over an existing, giving you a good idea of what the setbacks, approximate setbacks are. But it'll be an additional motion if you are willing to accept this waiver request.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would they have to have an as-built survey done as part of the build, the construction process, or no?
I can't confidently speak to that, because this is a deck.
Yeah.
That's why I'm not sure.
As opposed to an addition or something?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, it's at the discretion of the building department.
Right, okay. It'll be inspected anyways, so, yeah, so, okay.
So, comments, questions from the board? Peter, you want to start?
Sure.
Further?
I don't have any concerns, it's only a four-foot change, and I think the main abutter who would be hypothetically affected is the one to the rear, and you have a letter from them saying they don't mind, and they're quite a distance away, so I don't see it causing any risk of nuisance, noise, vibration, odor, or any of the other things that we worry about for special permits, so.
Okay, Lisa?
I have no issue with this. Thank you for coming, and thank you for reaching out to your butters and getting their comments.
Thank you.
I have no concerns.
And I have no concerns as well, and I do appreciate the letters from the butters, that's very helpful to us, so thank you. With that being said, this is a public hearing, can I get a motion to, excuse me, before that, we need to see if there's anyone in attendance that would like to be heard on this matter? Okay, thank you, can I get a motion to close the hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moved, can I get a motion, please?
I make a mo- yep, I make a motion to approve the special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt, would you make a motion to accept the waiver request, if you're comfortable with that?
Oh, that has to happen first?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
We wouldn't want to-
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the waiver of the plot plan for, I'll read the address, for the appeal for fifty-eight Beverly Hill Drive in the Residence B-1 District.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved.
I make a motion to approve a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to expand a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling upon property located at fifty-eight Beverly Hill Drive in the Residence B-1 District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next hearing, to hear the appeal of Theodore Labonte, twenty-four Everard Street, Worcester, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and lot upon property located at twenty-two Plainfield Ave. in the Residence B-2 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-two, Plot Three-Eight-Nine-Zero-Zero-Zero. Thank you, could you please state your name for the record?
Chris Torre.
Hello.
And I'm Theodore Labonte.
Good evening, if you could just give us an idea of what you intend to-
No, I got it. So, we are looking to do a one-story addition that will be non-conforming. The, it'll be twenty-by-twenty-seven, the house is currently a ranch, one story, it will stay one story. It is, the house is already non-conforming, and we will be, I don't, do you guys have a copy of the plot plan in front of you? I believe you do, right? Okay, so, you can see the setbacks as set. The setbacks on the, to the neighbor's yard is correct, the ten-foot, that is conforming, but the, to the front property line and the rear property line are not conforming. So, now, Rowan, correct me if I'm wrong, this will not be a variance, but a special permit, because the house is already non-conforming, and she had mentioned that there was something already in the pipeline for, you know, in the future this will be allowed, but, or that it used to be grandfathered in, but since it has been changed. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. It's gonna be a master bedroom, bathroom, it will stay one story, the house is already one story, so, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Rowan, any questions, comments, further explanation?
I have anything to add?
No.
Okay, thank you, let's talk to the board members, see what they have, Peter?
Um, back to me.
Lisa?
Okay, I am looking at the construction plans, and the side that will have the ten-point-six-inch setback now on the side property, it has one window, is that right? Trying to see if I'm looking at it correctly.
That side is gonna have two, I believe.
Oh, is it two?
Two, yes.
Okay, couldn't tell if the, the one window was just part of the existing house anyway.
No, so, that's just all addition and a new window, there'll be one in the front, two on the side, and one in the back.
Okay, so, that side, the side of the existing house is gonna be renovated to?
So, the side, it's gonna go off, right off the side of existing house?
Yes.
And we're not gonna go all the way to the front, they're gonna leave it back, just so symmetric and stuff, and-
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's just gonna go right to the side of the house, and then we wanted to side the whole thing, and something we've been waiting to do, but we always wanted to do an addition, so we didn't want to side until we, you know, actually did the additions, et cetera. But it would just be, you know what I mean, so they're gonna do the whole house, we're gonna side the whole house.
I understand now, okay, great, thank you. So, just to summarize, the existing footprint of the house is already non-conforming.
Correct.
You're gonna be adding an addition that is kind of setback, it's not, we used to say, it doesn't increase your non-conformity on your, on the front.
Right.
But it, we have to look at it now separately as if you're building this whole new structure, what are the, what are all the setbacks that are non-conforming, and we have to decide whether, you know, we think that is a nuisance in terms of odor, noise, things like that, traffic generated, and whatnot. So, I don't have any other questions for you, I will want to hear from the public, your butters, if they have any issues, but you've provided everything we need to make our decisions, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
So, the reason I asked to come back is I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding. So, the new side yard setback will be ten-and-a-half feet, and what's required in this district is ten, so it's not creating a new non-conformity there, and as Ms. Cosette mentioned, it's not intensifying the existing non-conformity, so I think I'm okay with it.
It's the front.
The other, Madam Chair, may I add one more thing?
Yes.
And I apologize for not catching this, is that the lot is slightly undersized, so we still have to evaluate that until we hear back from the Attorney General's Office regarding our new bylaw change.
Okay.
Which is also, I think, what the applicant was referring to.
That was it, yeah. Okay. I don't have any further comments. This is a public hearing, if there's anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? No one appears to, okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moved. Board's determination? Do you like to make a motion?
Well, I would just say that, I'm, I'm, I think it's fine, it's not making the structure any closer to the front, which is where the issue is, and it's within, on the side, on the new side, so I don't have an issue with it, I don't think.
I don't either.
I don't?
Nor do I.
Okay, so, can I get a motion, please?
Yes. And we have no waivers?
Okay, so, I make a motion to approve the special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to construct an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and lot upon property located at twenty-two Plainfield Avenue in the Residence B-2 District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, moved, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, may I just make an announcement? I will be sending out written copies of all decisions in the next few days or so, and so you can head out once you are given your decision by the board tonight.
Unless you want to sit through a meeting, you're welcome to do that. See someone sneaking out the door as we speak.
Please, don't stay.
Okay. Next appeal, this is to hear the appeal of Richard J. Luzo, Senior, thirty-five Nanigan Road, Paxton, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to construct a garage on a second floor to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and a lot upon property located at three forty-six Walnut Street in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-six, Plot Zero-Four-Eight-Zero-Zero. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is Richard Luzo, thirty-five Nanigan Road, Paxton, Massachusetts.
Good evening, members, Anthony Luzo, I'm Richard's son, and I live at forty-four Brook Street in Shrewsbury.
Great. Give us an idea of what you're planning to do.
So, on the plot plan, as you can see, I would like to put up a two-car garage on the south side of the existing dwelling. To do that, we have to demo one section, that's a little jog that sticks out on that side, which is a bedroom and a bathroom. The garage itself is actually gonna be conforming, because it's moved back from the forty-five foot from the road, which I believe it's, to be conforming is forty feet, so we're not coming any closer. On the north side of the house, there are two very small bedrooms, which we plan on turning into one bedroom, because they're just too small for, for anything. So, that would be one bedroom, we're demolishing the bedroom on the south side of the house. So, what we want to do is put a second floor to move two bedrooms up to the second floor with the bath that we're demoing in the first place. So that, we're not increasing bedrooms or bathrooms or anything, just trying to maneuver things around so that I can get a two-car garage there. And basically, that's it, and I plan on moving in there, so that's why I'm doing it, that I'm downsizing from Paxton.
Okay.
And my daughter lives next door to us in one of my other houses, and I own the property behind it, Willock's Restaurant, I've owned that for forty-three years, so-
Okay.
Okay.
And he also did speak to the other neighbor on the other side.
It'll be convenient rather than driving back and forth to Paxton every day.
Yeah, sure will.
Much more convenient.
Especially with gas prices.
Yes, good, okay. Rowan, anything further?
No, just to highlight that it's really that second-story addition that's non-conforming, it's an expansion of the non-conformity, because they're building up, that's the determination from our building inspector, and that's the main reason why there's the special permit in front of you, however, we've also included this garage addition as well to capture any expansion of living space on a non-conforming lot, although I do understand that the applicant says that it, the square footage may not be changing, but we chose to capture that here as well, just because there was some changing around.
Okay. Board members, Peter, questions, comments?
Not really, I don't have any issue with it, I understand the, what the constraints of the lot going up makes a lot of sense, and the existing structures, and I don't think it's going to cause any issues, nuisance, et cetera, so, I'm fine.
Thank you, Lisa?
I have no issue either, and I think every house should have a garage, so I think that's wonderful. I did have a question on the red, the red notation on the revised plot plan, do you have that in front of you? There's something marked in red, from, I was just curious.
It looks like the front door?
Yeah, I think that's, he outlined the existing dwelling that's gonna stay, basically, if I, is that what you're talking about, that little red outline on the-
That's the non-conformity, I think.
Exactly. That's highlighting the non-conformity instead of, okay.
Yeah.
I think we, right, we've seen it in different ways in the past, so I understand, but I think this surveyor chose to outline portion that lays outside.
So, that's just letting, that's just letting us know, it's really that, that one corner that is the thirty-three point three, not the entire thing, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That clarifies it for me, I will be interested in hearing if anybody has comment from the public, so.
Anne?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, does the lot slope downward toward the back? Is that why the, the rear elevation, it looks like it's-
Yes, it does.
Okay, all right.
It's actually a very long lot that runs all the way back, but it does slope out the back.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any questions, I'm looking at your plans, and they're very nice, so, looks like it's gonna be a nice house, so I don't have any questions or concerns. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay, no one here to be heard?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved, can I get a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 4B, to construct a garage and a second floor to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and lot upon property located at three forty-six Walnut Street in the Commercial Business District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good luck with the construction.
Good luck.
Okay. Next six-thirty hearing is to hear the appeal of Justin Stockwell, one sixty-three Willock Ave., Millbury, Mass., for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section Four, to construct a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling with a non-conforming setback upon property located at seventy-three Lake Street in the Residence B-1 District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Thirty-four, Plot One-Five-Zero-Six-Zero-Zero. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good evening, I'm Justin Stockwell.
Good evening, Justin, let us know what you plan on doing, please.
So, right now, there's an existing four-by-four entry deck to get in, an entry door, an egress door, and there's no roof over it, so the homeowner has issues in the winter, she's an older resident, and-
Be careful with that, I'm kidding. Sorry.
That's okay, I was trying to be careful.
It's hard.
And she's just worried about the, you know, the elements in the wintertime, so she'd like to, basically, as the plot plan says, have a seven-foot wide by four-foot set of, deck and a set of stairs there.
Okay.
So.
Rowan first.
Yep, so, this one, you might be wondering why. But, yeah, so, because this, this deck is wider than what the building code considers a means of egress landing, our building department, a building inspector, would interpret that a deck of this size because it's wider than the width of the door, and is intended to, or could have recreation space on it, that it needs to be permitted as living space.
We, can I comment?
Yes.
Sorry. We made the deck a little bit wider than the opening, so that the posts don't come down right where the trim work comes down, just so you have a better aesthetic appeal.
Okay. So, now I understand the order of things, I think.
Yeah.
I think, I, well, let me ask this, so, the, there is an existing four-by-four means of egress, but we are, the building inspector wouldn't classify it as a means of egress because of its size, it's four-by-four, normally it's smaller.
The seven, it's seven-by-four.
It's seven-by-four, oh, thank you.
The existing was four-by-four.
So, they're expanding the existing.
Thank you, so that's where I'm getting into the order of things, so, you used to have something there that was considered a means of egress, four-by-four, but you have now, you've done things a little out of order, but you, you constructed it seven-by-four, and we're trying to get this approved or not, right?
Not constructed, not constructed yet.
No, no, they're, they're going through the right permitting process of it.
So, okay, so, but we have no plot plan showing a seven-by-four, I'm not seeing it where-
I think we do.
We do?
It's called plot plan dash Lake Street seventy-three?
Yes.
This one-
It's, it's the highlighted in red, and it has, under it, it shows the existing dimension, even though it's arguably very-
Okay, I'm sorry. I can't see, so I'm seeing four and four, and a red smudge, okay.
So, it's, yeah, the long, the long side is closest to Tavern Street.
They have a paper copy in the folder, if it'd be more helpful for you to look at.
Nope, I, I'll zoom in.
Can blow it up a little bit, too.
Really big.
Okay, so sorry for that, so.
No worries.
So, if you were to build a four-by-four means of egress, we wouldn't even be here, but you want to make this wider for safety reasons and whatnot?
So, you can store shovel and salt up there, and, so it doesn't take away from the door.
Just aesthetically, because it's, the four-by-four is basically a landing, there's no more room than to open the door, basically, right?
Right.
So, this makes sense, yeah.
Okay, I got it. Now I get it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anne?
Oh, I have no concerns.
Okay, can I ask you, Peter?
You didn't, but I don't have any concerns either.
Okay. Or do I? This is a public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? No one back there? Okay, can I, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved, can I get a motion, please?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section Four, to construct a deck on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling with a non-conforming setback upon property located at seventy-three Lake Street in the Residence B-1 District.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay. And last on the agenda is a six-thirty hearing to hear the appeal of Barlow Signs, one fifty-eight Greeley Street, Hudson, New Hampshire, for variance from the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section Four E, to install non-conforming signage upon the property located at two-hundred Hartford Turnpike, Building One, Unit One, in the Commercial Business District. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate Fifty-two, Plot One-Two-Eight-Zero-Zero-Zero. Can you please state your name for the record?
Good evening, my name is Brandon Courier from Barlow Signs.
Hello, Brandon.
All right, so, as you mentioned, I'm here supporting Market Basket, so, this evening, we're seeking variance approval to install an illuminated, internally illuminated set of channel letters reading Market Basket, with an aggregate square footage of four-hundred-and-eighty-two, where two-hundred is allowed by code. The proposed signage was designed to scale with a facade to complement the building, it'll not, it will not distract or be unpleasant to the neighbors, as it's in, as it is in a commercial district. As you know, this is an extremely unique development, lot size, it's roughly about five-hundred feet or so back from the main road, from Hartford Turnpike, so between Market Basket and the road, there's multiple businesses, there's landscapes, a lot of parking spaces, and as well, you have that large interchain, intersection that's, that's coming in. So, when the development's complete, there's gonna be a lot of other distractions there, it's a forty-mile-an-hour road, so having proper signage deeply set back will effectively aid the wayfinding public to their destination safely. So, as I mentioned, forty, probably people are going forty-five miles an hour through there, so, traveling at that speed, you're only gonna have a second or so to identify what, what is back there, and if, like I mentioned, if there's multiple businesses, it's hard to, you know, find that, and it could cause safety issues. So, due to the reasons above, causes a direct hardship, as the code was not specified for a development of this scale. I know, I know you've been working with Jen, and we've created a master sign plan, or per se, a master sign plan with a bunch of calculations, with the road frontage and how all that broke down, I'm sure you guys, do you guys have that all in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. So, with the variance, do you want me to go through each section, your A, B, and C section?
I think that would be a good, a good thing.
All right, great. I know each board's different, that's why I like to ask.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Section A, what is a hardship that would justify granting the variance? So, mentioned, deep setback, very large-scale property, requiring greater signage, the sightlines from approaching from different directions, you have the Starbucks, you have the bank in the way. Section B, describe how the literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning bylaw would involve substantial hardship or financial otherwise. Sign code does not permit for a property this size, the Market Basket storefront, in comparison to other storefronts, is very large, the signage is actually only covering two-point-nine percent of their actual storefront, so it is a very small percentage, and Market Basket takes great pride in keeping consistency from location to location, so this is a standard set that they do, as you're familiar, you've probably driven by that development multiple times, you can see the sign band up there, and, and really, that is, that is exactly where that's gonna go, and it's, it's gonna fit well within that area. Moving to Section C, describe how a variance may be granted without substantial detriment to the public, the public good, and how a variance may be granted with respect to the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw of the town of Shrewsbury. This is a clean, attractive, two-scale sign, complements the building, public benefits from the visibility that's gonna provide, great identification, wayfinding, and then it's gonna be encouraging the most appropriate use for, for this land, for this development, so we're, we're fitting the sign within how it's supposed to, supposed to be zoned for, So, we're, we're fitting the sign, uh, within how it's supposed to, supposed to be zoned for, so...
Okay.
So, if you have any questions or if you'd like me to clarify on anything else, please, please feel free.
Rowan?
I don't think I have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go through the board, see what we have. Peter?
Um, so you're asking for a lot of relief at 482 feet versus 200, but I think in this circumstance, it's, it's really necessary, um, because of how far back the building is and how large the building is. I think if it conformed, it probably wouldn't be legible at all from the road.
It would be very...
Um, and that seems like it's not in the spirit of the bylaw. Um, and as you mentioned, it could even create safety issues if people are trying to slow down to try to read what it is or whatever. So, I don't have an issue with it, and I think the uniqueness, um, requirements and hardship requirements are probably met.
Lisa?
Yes, so you did a great job explaining the hardships. I do wanna push back with some questions, just so I can feel comfortable. So, uh, you're asking for more than double our requirement, and I just want to... If we looked at the, uh, sign plan, for example, um, you've got 460 feet of building frontage, and your sign, uh, if you were to meet our requirements, it would probably need to be about half its size, which would only have the word market in it, let's say, and you'd have to fit Market Basket in that. And your argument is, excuse me, that, that wouldn't be visible or readable, um, from the road, let's say, from that distance. It... Is that basically what the alternative would look like?
Yes, that is correct. Um, if you, uh, are traveling at the speeds mentioned, I mean, the, the road's posted for 40 miles an hour. Most people don't travel the exact speed limit. So, uh, as, as the speed increases, the size of the sign has to increase to be legible, uh, to be seen for the ADA standards and whatnot. Um, but if we did comply, uh, with this, the sign would be, uh, per se, less than 60% of what it is now, and it would be illegible, uh, from the road.
Great, thank you.
Very distracting.
And I did have questions on other signs that are going to be placed closer to Route 20. Are you responsible for those as well, and are there any?
Um, I know there's, uh, a couple other locations that are called out here. Um, I believe Rowan, Jen is working on those. I'm not up to speed on...
Okay.
...those specifically because that was not really, um, part of this. Uh, but I know that, um, the bank and I believe Starbucks, uh, we are working through.
Okay, so before I ask you, Rowan, that question, you did also mention, so you've mentioned the lot size, the shape, and that there are other structures that will be in front of this, impeding its view perhaps, if it were smaller. So, are there, uh, at the arg... One of the arguments is that it won't be visible. You won't know that this building is the Market Basket from Route 20. But if there are other signs there...
Yeah, sure.
Um, can you talk about those as well?
Me?
Yes, because it's not part of this variance. Do you know anything about those as well?
Um, I might just ask you to clarify your question.
Okay, so this, this is for an individual sign that will be on the building itself.
Mm-hmm.
I imagine, and the ar... One of the arguments to approve this variance is, uh, one of the hardships is that from Route 20, as you're driving by, you won't be able to see the sign unless it's this large. And I'm arguing, well, are there going to be other signs closer to Route 20 that would let me know that a Market Basket is in this location?
So, are there any other signs for Market Basket on the lot?
Yes.
Um, as of now, um, my understanding in working with Jen is that there is also a monument sign that you can see on your site plan.
Okay.
Which...
And that'll have everything.
Among other, right, that'll have all, I imagine many of the businesses on the lot.
Sure.
Um, as... Okay.
Is that the one labeled Edgemere Crossing tenant sign in the red box?
Yes, so, um, I do know that we will be manufacturing that, and there is a permit for that. Um, and on that, you'll see the Market Basket, and then I believe there's five or six other tenants on that development. Um, and that we did, um, uh, when we designed that sign, it is about, uh, 50 to 60 square feet less than what we could have, um, used there. So, we did decide to, uh, be respectful, uh, in designing and getting that, that monument sign.
I wonder, too, if I could just offer kind of a, um, sort of inverse perspective here. I think it's a totally legitimate argument that if there's a sign next to the road, do you really need this sign? I think another way of looking at it is, even though this sign is going to be huge, it's going to be so far from the road that it's not going to appear to be huge at all.
Correct.
Um, and so, if the, if the purpose of the bylaw is to keep from having, like, oversized, giant signs close to the street, like, this isn't gonna be that. It'll probably look the same size as a conforming sign that's twice as close to the road.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, it's all, like I mentioned in my presentation, it's all to scale with the building.
Right.
Um, I mean, they do multiple of these buildings a year, so...
Yeah.
We do about a Market Basket a month, and, and they're all designed to the same spec, the same everything, to keep consistent.
Yeah.
So, I was, I was going to add, if this building were much closer to Route 20, I... Then I would question how it meets with the intent of our bylaws.
Yeah, same.
I would agree to it.
So, okay, um, alright.
That's good.
So, I think you've answered every question that I have. Thank you.
Anne?
I have no other questions. Thank you.
I'd just like to say I think your presentation was very good.
Thank you.
Agreed.
And welcome Market Basket to town.
Very excited.
And, um, in, in doing my research, um, on Market Basket signs, I found one where the "R" burned out, so it's "Mackit Basket."
Mackit.
And so I was just...
Which is more accurate, really.
Or "Makit Basket" if you're from Pennsylvania.
Yeah.
But if you're from here, it's "Mackit."
I laughed when I saw that, so...
That's perfect.
You could just make sure the "R" is there, because not all of us are from Boston.
Absolutely.
Um, that would be greatly appreciated, but aside from that, I think you did a great job, and we appreciate that you've, you've done all this work, so...
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, okay, this is a public hearing. I do not believe there's anyone here that would like to talk about this, so can I get a motion to close the hearing, please?
Motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
Yes, I make a motion to approve variance from the Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section, oh boy, 7E, to install non-conforming signage upon property located at 200 Hartford Turnpike,